The meeting is called. Let's all stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lois, would you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Certification of the meeting has been revised before this session.
Please call home.
Mr. Venero.
Here.
Mr. Zambrano. Mrs. Nogarada.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Constance.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes, here.
Mr. Maddie.
Here.
Mr. Colbiella. Mr. Canello. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Lord Joyce DeVito, but Joseph was in Soria. President's address. Mr. Gilrenzo.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the September 25th, 2014 meeting?
Some.
Lois, call home.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mrs. Nogarada.
Yes.
Mr. Constance.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Maddie.
Yes.
Chairman's comments? No comments this time. Correspondence and payments of bills. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we'll go to old business. It's a continuation of the Northeast redevelopment plan comprised of blocks 9101, blocks 9, 10, and 14, block 9103, lot 1, block 1002, lot 1, and a portion of block 9002, lot 1. Mr. Madden?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. What we are engaged in tonight is the second planning board meeting on the Northeast area redevelopment plan. And what I intend to do is give a brief review of what I offered at the last meeting. There's new faces here, and it might be helpful to the board to hear a brief summation of what I said last two weeks ago. Then I would be open to answer questions from the board. And then finally, there is a representative of the property owner, Peter Stack, who has issued a report to the board, and I suppose that the board wants to hear him go into some detail about that report. This meeting is for the purpose of the planning board to review and comment on the redevelopment plan. That would then go to the council, who would then act on it officially at a public hearing as if it were an ordinance of the tension. This is a non-condemnationed redevelopment area. That means there's no eminent domain, there's no condemnation of this property. The redevelopment area consists of 27.87 acres. It runs from Washington Avenue to Main Street. The Washington Avenue side is next to ShopRite, Boston Motorcycle Mall, and it's about a little over four acres. On the other side, the railroad tracks down to Main Street, it's the Kitty property, and 23.7 acres, and it runs on Main Street. The redevelopment plan, a redevelopment area, was designated in the area in need of redevelopment where it meets all the criteria, and that was done by the council on July 22nd, 2014, which Sunday also authorized the preparation of the redevelopment plan. Now, in preparing this redevelopment plan, there was some considerations I think are very important, particularly in light of one of the options which represents a major departure, or at least in terms of the intensity, from prior development in town. First of all, this property is unique in its size. It's a rather large property in the north in New Jersey, New York City area, 27 acres if you look in the redevelopment plan. You can see, you can see New York City, you can see the Meadowlands, you can see across the river, and then you can see this site. It stands out, it's pretty big. And it does represent a real opportunity that doesn't exist because the Meadowland does have limitations because of the whole environment of the street. So this is a pretty close property. It's only 10 miles from New York City. And by road, it's also got great access to Route 7, the Belleville Pike, to Route 21, Montgomery Carter Highway, which leads you to Route 3. It's got dramatic views of the Manhattan skyline. Certainly when you get above, say, four stories, say, and you're going to see this horizon of the Manhattan skyline, which is something rare in this area of the state. So it also has bus, rail, and some mass transit options. There's bus service now, there may be rail options in the future. There are also trends, I think are important, that are favorable to the redevelopment of the site as proposed. First is part of the New York City, like, old mega-region. The world, the global economy is being concentrated in the major global centers. For example, in our area, New York City is a major global city. But that global metropolis runs from Maine to Charlotte, North Carolina. We're right in the middle of New York City. New York City is considered, along with London, the financial capital of the world. And we are going to benefit by that, whilst with our proximity, again, we're only 10 miles away, eight miles by the proflies. There's emerging societal trends that favor the urban tours versus the suburbs. I think Lois emailed you a copy of an article that was in last Thursday's Star Ledger front page, talked about the trend of, the trend toward empty nesters, the young people, people without children moving back to the cities where there's, or urban areas, downtown areas like Washington Avenue. And that article, if you read the whole thing, many of the statements in that are also contained within the redevelopment plan. Washington Avenue, I think, is an unrealized asset, certainly could be a lot more dramatically developed. It might be very attractive for corporate offices. That article pointed out that corporate offices are closing down in suburban development because the young people don't want to be isolated out in the middle of nowhere, where they can't go out at lunch, get a sandwich, or go to Doodle shopping, et cetera. So downtowns are starting to be very popular. State policies are favoring development in areas like Belleville, and the sewer and water capacity in this area is excellent as compared to the rest of the state where there's shortfalls. So there are reasons why this area has a lot of potential. I guess the question that this redevelopment poses, certainly with option three, is, does the town want to entertain a dramatic change in its current development character? The benefit of that is a substantial increase in future revenues, jobs, economic developments will have tremendous spinoff effects on the rest of, certainly the rest of Washington Avenue and the Valley area. One of the considerations that led to at least entertaining this option three, which was essentially the property owner slash redevelopers' proposal, was that Belleville is under budget constraints, and only going to get worse. You've got high property tax, you've got past, you've got legacy obligations, and you're not going to be rescued by the state. And this represents an opportunity for Belleville, at least using its own assets, its own resources, to try to capture a potential major development that would have potential and major economic benefits in the town. I conservatively project at full delta, using the current taxes, that this could generate $17.7 million in municipal taxes, municipal school taxes. So certainly, I think, it's worthy of bringing to your attention, enter this board and the council to consider. Now, the options, I have, there's three options, and I know that, I don't want to get people hung up on these illustrations, because these are almost like, these are almost like trying to demonstrate, at least to me, that these plans could all work, you know? So it's like, they're almost like yield plans. They're also not necessarily what a developer would come in with, but it does represent at least some of the ideas I think we would want to pursue with a future development. So option one. Option one is essentially what it is, what it's allowed in the BG zone on Washington Avenue, and that would then be allowed also on the Main Street of, or the Kitty property, which is currently is on BF. And we had a development on that Washington Avenue zone. George Jacobs came in and got approval from this board. He proposed 135 apartments, 25,000 square feet of retail spaces, and he accommodated parking at surface parking. So surface parking, obviously, is the least expensive kind of parking. Once you go to underground or structured parking, you increase the cost of that space by five or six times. So that, to me, represents, at least from a market standpoint, it's already been tested, at least we have one person who pursued a plan, he dropped it, he had a financing problem right in the middle of the Great Recession. I mean, that was a hard time to get financing. And also, I think he had some disputes over the cost of the cleanup that he was engaged in. So what the redevelopment plan would offer is to a developer, the opportunity to use the benefits of redevelopment. And the town could fill in, if there's a financing gap, and it may not be, but if there's a financing gap, the town could offer a pilot, and therefore could implement the plan. So that's option one, and the plan calls for it being capped at 600 units, 95,000 square feet of non-residential floor area, all surface parking, likely of a four or five-story development. Option two is the conditional use that's allowed in the BG zone, which allows 50 dwelling units per acre. Now, that's going to require some structure and some, a combination of surface and structured parking in order to come anywhere near the 990 units that could be accommodated on the site. It also has 185,000 square feet of retail or could be office if that indeed. Now, that's a requirement. Every option requires at least 25 percent, 10 percent, of every development phase to have, or combination of phases, to have 10 percent of their floor area in a non-residential use. So it's basic, we're talking about an mixed-use project throughout this development. The building heights that could have happened there would be something anywhere eight stories at 90 feet, again, with structured parking. If you're into another level of construction, you're probably going to see eight stories if you go beyond five stories. So I think that's the likely development. Again, then we have option three, which obviously is the most intensive development option and the one that most of the attention is being focused on. That is going to be developed under the plan in two separate phases. Phase one would be on the Washington Avenue site, and that would allow for 550 units at a 20-story building, 275 feet, on Washington Avenue. And that would be capped at 550 and at least 82,000 square feet of retail or work office or other non-residential type use. Phase two would allow 3,950 units, 820,000 square feet of non-residential uses, and up to 50-story buildings for 520 feet. So again, that, that option three, for the most part, does reflect what the developer, the owner of the property, the developer, says that he wants to do, he's willing to do, and he believes he can do it. Our plan is different than what he has, and you can talk about his plan, Peter Stack is here, but it does allow the same number of units that this project does allow. So those are the three options. Obviously, we're going to talk more about option three, I'm sure. And the concern that the board has, and rightly so, is development impact. What's the impact of these plans? Well, first of all, while we propose or allow density, they're only achievable if you can meet certain thresholds or criteria. For example, all of the options require a minimum of 10 percent of the floor area in non-residential use, which I already stated. We also require three different residential types or architectural styles. So we want it, we don't want it to look like a project, we want it to have some diversity and architectural character. An average of two bedrooms, so it'll be one, two, or three bedrooms, and I think the board will probably want to talk more about that. Indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, and there's a percentage per square feet that has to be set aside for indoor and outdoor recreation facilities. And then conformance to all Belleville ordinance, you know, the stormwater ordinance and whatever ordinance that Tom Harris would review for you. So that's, that's all options after complying with that. Then the options that, if you're going above the option one density, if you're going above 34 units per acre, at that point, and I'll direct you to my master plan on page 35 and 36, first thing that has to be done is, a physical impact has to be provided for both options two and three. And they have to show that there is projected revenue and cost for the town and the schools. There'll be a surplus. That, in other words, the town isn't going to be burdened by the development. The development we're proposing, I can assure you, is going to have a surplus. The second one, second requirement, is that they have to determine the projected public school enrollment, whether or not it will, can fit into the existing, again, when this is existing means whenever they are developing, could be year 2020 or something, elementary, middle school, and high school capacity. We either use local school multipliers, in other words, what these type of units would generate in terms of school kids, or Rutgers data, which they've done for high-rise development. And this data, if shows that the school capacity has exceeded by 10 percent, the redevelopers would have to do the following, one of the following. You'd have to fund additional public school classroom space, or make another arrangement with the school board, or provide private school opportunities affordable to redevelopment residents so that they wouldn't be going into public school. That might be attractive if this is going to be a high, high-style type of development. They may want to have a state-of-the-art type of private school, a tech school or something like that. Or they have to delay the development phases until sufficient school capacity becomes available. So there's a process that has to be followed that, you know, that otherwise they can't go forward. A study of the utilities, public and private capacity, and that would, they have to show that water, sewer, electric, all that's capable, everything can work. Traffic capacity, they'd have to show they're going to maintain it. Basically, they're going to have to maintain the level of service that exists out on the road today. And where it falls below, they have to come up with all-site type, site improvements, or they have to come up with their own, we're talking about peak hour now. For example, in the peak hour, they have to have a private chitney, make people work, so that you're not going to get so many cars coming up the site. Finally, in terms of on-site parking, they have to do a parking analysis, and they have to show that if they have a parking problem, they're going to have to show how they're going to solve it. One way would be, again, the chitney service, which means people could exist on the site with only one car or no cars. And then there's going to be a view shed analysis and a shadow analysis so that you can see that this is going to have an impact on the community. Now, when you get to option three, there's an additional requirement. Anything above 50 dwelling units per acre, there's 11 bonus situations where they have to, almost earn their additional density above 50 units per acre. Remember, option three allows the developer, at least on phase two, to have 250 units per acre. And option on phase one, it's 122 units per acre. They have to earn that density. There is 11 items in terms of parking, structure underground, coverage, deed certification, more than 10 percent non-residential floor areas, renewable energy on site, outdoor public art, public park or recreation, civil, open to the public, on-site cultural space for public, public activities, on-site job care, a project mass transit, i.e. a chitney or a light rail, if it comes about in within the project time period, and then the provision of affordable private school accommodations. Now, I know that some of you were trying to find my calendar.
Did you hand out all of those, Ray?
No.
Oh, yeah. I just want to go through it, just to show people how you earn your way to the density. For example, on the bottom, 250, Darlene put this together, 250 units per acre is not as upright. You must earn your way beyond 50 units per acre for providing amenities or reducing impacts. So example, example one, the base density is 50. If you have on-site job care, cultural space, mass transit, structured parking, public art, public order, non-residential floor, as described in the plan, you'd get 250 units per acre. Or example two is, if you provide a private school, cultural space, public art, and on-site job care, you'd get 250 units per acre. So I know that Ray had raised the question, does the plan, once the plan's approved, that they automatically have this density like in zoning? This is, this is not zoning as we know it. This is redevelopment, and you're basically going to enter into redevelopment agreement in which these density bonuses are going to be fleshed, they're going to be fleshed out between the developer and the town in whatever matters acceptable to the town. But it shows that we are not giving you this density. You're earning it by doing things that we want or solving impact problems. So again, I think it shows that we're being sensitive to the impacts of a project like this, at least trying to ameliorate what might be concerns that you're going to raise and other people are going to raise. So let me move on to, let me wrap this up. Your role is, it really, obviously, to offer comments and recommendations to the council. You're also here basically to say, is this redevelopment consistent with the master plan? And in my opinion, it's consistent, at least on Washington Avenue, where the BG zone was in the master plan and where the zoning then followed. Option three is consistent with some of the policy statements that were made, the policy of emphasizing redevelopment, more intensive growth, particularly in Washington Valley and Washington Avenue and the Valley. So Peter Stack said that, well, it's not consistent in terms of the fact that you have BF zoning on the Main Street, the Kitty property, and that's true. So you, in making your comments to the council, you could say, well, it's somewhat consistent, and it has some relationship to the master plan, but in terms of the actual land use designation for the Kitty property, BF zone, it doesn't. I guess, remember, when that was done, we still had hopes of getting that, the development, and so that was even before George Jacobs came along. So that's one of your, that's one of the things you have to do to make this consistency rule. And finally, again, the town council will hold a public hearing on this redevelopment plan, either approve it, amend it, or reject it. And obviously, the comments you make are going to be considered by the council, and that's what your role is. So with that, I would be open to any questions or any comments that you want to make.
I just have one. To be clear, if we, if this was to be approved and sent to the council, the council could amend it, accept it as it is, reject it?
Right.
And then all these criteria have to be met before they get the density?
Correct.
So before they wanted to build, they'd have to prove traffic study?
Right.
Approve school impact study?
Right.
Approve economic impact study. All these criteria would have to be met before they could proceed?
That's correct. That's correct. So this is a little different than zoning. Obviously, if they don't want to do that, they could proceed development in accord with the underlying zoning.
I thought at the last meeting, we were expecting a package of more additional information. I thought we were going to get a portion of the Rutgers study, the fire department, their opinion, and how they could handle a 50-story building. I also thought we were going to get something about the emergency exits. We discussed it was too lazy on some.
Well, that's something that would be a site plan issue.
Right, because I'd be concerned about the Kitty place, which seems to be in that zone now and that property owner. For me, I expected this information, I don't know if anybody else did, but I was a little disappointed not receiving it, because that would help us
Right.
...make some sort of decision.
Well, we did, we did follow up on Darlene's request about the status of the claim. On the Washington Avenue site, the site has a, they have a remediation plan in place. The air, why the area is fenced is that it's a historic fill area, and that's, that's fenced so the public can't have access to that. If the plan is that is to be developed, if any of that historic fill area is exposed to the, in other words, whether it's grass area or dirt area, then it would have to, well, it'll have to be scraped out part of the way. If it's covered with asphalt, it's fine. They have a deep nose, there's stuff down there, but they build residential there. On the Kitty property, they have gotten clean-built wells on the soil, they've done further action on the soil. In terms of the groundwater, they have a bunch of monitoring wells, and they're doing investigation on what this, what the condition of those groundwater is, and what has to be done to clean them up. So it's, in other words, more work has to be done, obviously, on the Kitty property in order to develop anything.
Yeah, if they proceed, they'd have to get DEP approval
Yeah.
...on the whole site.
Correct.
So they couldn't proceed unless DEP gives them
Right.
Back to the question, why didn't we get those additional information that you were requested?
Well, in terms of the school, the school population data, I did, I had some stuff from West New York, I wasn't able to get any. I thought the challenge was for me to get something in Jersey City, because Jersey City has a number of these high-rise buildings that are residential, so I didn't, I'm sorry I didn't get you the Rutgers study, because that's easily accessible with us, we have options to talk about.
Fire department?
The fire department.
I had spoken to Deputy Chief Pedalino, and he said with mutual aid and sprinkled building and stand pipes that he didn't think would be an issue.
Buildings are designed for fire suppression.
No, I understand that, but I'm just wondering why last meeting, we requested certain information, and we did not receive it, and now you're getting a verbal through the fire department. and we did not receive it, and now you're getting a verbal through the fire department, you're not sure about the, there was some sort of loss of communication somewhere, I'm just trying to determine what it is.
Well, I thought we also said, I meant, that we were going to discuss that, but the site plan came back before us. I, that's what I thought.
Well, those criteria would have to be met before they could proceed, which is the impact on the schools. They'd have to prove to the council and the school board, and it wouldn't be a significant impact, and if there is, they'd have to pay for it.
Right. Well, I just thought there was some kind of inconsistency as long as the childcare. We're talking that they have to have childcare in the building, and yet we're discussing private school issues versus public school. That's not unclear, and I think the council would have to be apprised of this, because that can put us in a big situation. So, you know, public school versus private schools, that's a big, big problem.
Well, the idea of that is it's a way to avoid, if you've got, if you've got a capacity problem, it's one way of saying, well, you could divert those kids to, to a private school. Some of them may elect to go to their own private schools, you know.
Yeah, but we're all at capacity in every one of our schools.
Yeah, but remember, this is something that, again, we're not talking about today.
We don't see getting any better, because according to your report, you're saying that families that are moving in have three to four children.
I didn't say that.
No, I tried to hear in your statement, I mean, statement's clear, we had said that...
Where's that statement?
I will find it for you. You can go back to, who I find it, did he bear that?
I just had a question. The private school, like, how would that work? You can't legally tell residents of a development, you have to go to a private school, right?
You can't, you don't, no, but you offer the opportunities. Again, it would be, it would be part of the redevelopment agreement to spell out that the quality of this school, that it would be a very attractive option. It would be like a magnet school, that would be very attractive to the residents of this development. They probably would prefer to go to that, if it was done in a way. I think your, think about the three to four kids, I said that where the kids are going to come from in the future is the existing single-family housing stock.
Yes.
Well, that's, but this is, this is the type of housing that doesn't generate kids.
Yeah, that's what you had said.
Okay.
If we're going to project, have a twenty-year projection, we have to think that we're at overcapacity right now.
Right.
Two-hundred-year-old buildings.
Right.
In twenty years, what is our school system going to look like? Right now, it's not very favorable, but in twenty years...
How can we answer that?
No, that's why I'm projecting.
How can we answer what our school system is going to be like?
But that's why I'm projecting, that we're going to have a high story kids consistency. They're claiming that maybe ten people are coming out of that school.
Yeah, but I think you said, Mr. Martin, you projected maybe about ninety?
Ninety under option three.
Under option three, because he did give us an estimate, maybe ninety, ninety-two.
Using the Rutgers.
Now, that could be grammar school, middle school, high school, all combined, ninety, that's an estimate.
Right. Yet they're required to have childcare in the building, so that would be like more of a preschool, grow up one child?
Well, it could be for anybody.
You know what I'm saying?
It could be.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem plausible or likely to benefit this district's school system.
All right, let me, let me, you raise a good question, and it really goes to the heart of this whole redevelopment plan. You have an existing public school that has problems. You may, if you continue on into the future, it may get worse according to you. This plan at least tries, with option three certainly, to give you a tax resource that would help you pay for, you know, seventeen million dollars each year could pay for a lot of new schools. So, I mean, you raise a question that, you're looking at the future and it doesn't look good. The enrollment isn't going down.
Right.
It may go up. You have to think, and the town officials have to think, what are we going to do to solve that problem and the other problems? If you have a tax rate that goes up two or three percent each year, you know, that's going to be, you know, an extra over ten, twenty-year period, it's going to be another two or three thousand dollars that are going to add to the tax rate. And that's horrendous, and you already paid very high tax rates for the type of houses you had there. So that's one of the considerations that I don't like in this plan. You can, when you say, well, wait, this is way beyond, it's way beyond what we were used to understand. And I have to agree with you, is, you have to think, we have to weigh, it's a balancing act. Do we want something that may be very, very good tax-wise, but have, you know, some impacts? Or do we want to just, you know, not have that and just muddle on? I don't know the answer. That's why you're a planning board and the council of the governing body. I'm giving you the option, there's options here, you may or may not.
And that's why my concerns, I want the council to be aware of.
Okay, well, then put that, I would say, put that in your recommendations, you know, and we will, we will endeavor to have the answers on.
On page thirty-seven, it says, you know, in order for them to get that density, they have to make arrangements with the school board.
Yeah.
Page thirty-seven, under A, B, C, and D. So in order for them to proceed, they have to school through the school board. If they are going to have an impact, how are they going to deal with it?
No, I mean, the school board is, I don't have the answer. I mean, that's why they go to the school board and say, hey, the school board may say, we have a solution here. And they have the big trailers in, I don't know what the solution is, but nonetheless.
That's something that...
No, but I mean, again, if you're worried about capacity and the school board says that's a solution they'll accept, that's their decision, not my decision.
If the board could proceed, they have to prove to the school board and the council, yeah, if it's, if it exceed capacity, they're going to have to deal with it.
Right. And it all goes back to, again, people say, well, how are we going to know that? Well, you would know it by the type of unit and either your local multipliers, or that type of unit, what is being generated, or with your past experience, as well as what Rutgers and what other municipalities with similar style development, like West New York, Jersey City, Portland, you know, their places that have these tall buildings, you know, and you would want to go to them and say, well, how many school kids are coming out of, you know, a fifty-story building that Trump built on the coast in Jersey City? When you have a building like this, this is a special, a building of this scale, it is special in terms of building construction, maybe. You know, you build a one, two, three, or four-story building, or even a five-story, maybe, it's stick-built, it's wooden, it's wooden. These are, these are steel structures, they have fine, you know, finished materials, you know, they're, they're, they're built a lot differently, and they're a more expensive building, obviously, and therefore they're better factoratables, you know. So, and again, in terms of fire, and we noticed lately or recently in New York, they've had fires in these high-rises, they've all been contained within the unit itself, they don't spread to the whole building. And people not dying from being hurt, it's the smoke.
The fire department also did say they don't have any plans, so once there was a plan, they would, they would address it.
Well...
Well, these are just conceptual, so it's hard for them to say, once they see a plan, then they can make more qualified decisions.
Well, I think one of the things that, that maybe the plan should address, and I apologize to Patty, maybe the fire should be part of a requirement that, that they get fire training and equipment, maybe, you know, to, to deal with the high-rise fire.
That's what I brought up at the last meeting, two concerns as well.
Yeah, I mean, but there's going to be, no one, they don't have a ladder. They don't have a ladder to deal with that, you know.
I know we're here as an advisory for the council, I just want to put our concerns on the record, so they're able to read them and they can have those same concerns and have possible answers at that point, before they make their decision.
When we, when you get those, we will make sure that those answers are provided to the council, so that they have that information when they make a decision.
Yeah, the other two concerns would have been the public and private utility infrastructure.
That's a classic.
Right, I know. And the drainage down there, drainage concerns, because of the flooding.
Well, there is, you know, on our plans, we have a huge detention area, just, well, that's what Lowe's at, you know, so we have to, and Lowe's had a lot of coverage with the old parking lot, you know, so it's all about coverage.
Yeah.
Actually, in option three, really has a lot of open space, and so there's opportunities to capture and...
Because, you know, the fire department, if you look at any of those options, the fire department has to be able to even get in there.
Right.
And it didn't even give clear view, that we could, going around, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, and believe me, that's part of what you do in site planning.
Yeah, this, the developer said that these don't even resemble what they would build.
Well, that's what, for option three, right. But these other plans, they do have fire, they will literally have rovers around the buildings, you know, so they can get, in other words, they can get around the entire building, you know.
Mr. Pratt, I have a question regarding density.
Yes.
If we were to cap the height, lower than fifty stories, can they still achieve their density per acre by adding another tower?
Um...
Or does their density diminish?
No, they, they, you know, again, the density is based on the acres, not based on the height. Yeah, I think they could, I mean, at some point, they probably could chop it down, of course, they could, but, yeah, they could, I mean, I think to, what they're thinking of, unlike our plan, they're thinking of fewer buildings and slender buildings, kind of like more, like the kind of dramatic buildings you see in New York City. My plan, it conceives that this redevelopment will consist of a variety of, a variety of densities and likely be sectioned off cycle redevelopment. So again, I, it's, it's another way to skin the cat. I mean, obviously, they want, they come in with a plan that meets the general requirements in the plan, in terms of the density and height and all that stuff, and the board get approved. But why just another option? And either way, my plan or their plan, it shows the works, there are options there. So it answered your question, my plan actually does have upper, you know, different heights.
Different levels.
Right.
What was their proposal, how many thousand were there? Was there a number?
There is a number, right. In fact, I would refer that to Peter Steck, he presented in his memo, an alternative plan, the developer's plan, if you will. I'd like him to talk about that when he gets a chance, that and get into that question, because I don't remember all the names.
What would be scheduled for full build-out?
Be the timeline? That would be, that would be up to the market, really. Typically, I mean, typically, the developers are going to be building, I think this is a twenty-year period, twenty-year plan myself.
So you...
That's my own, again, that's a question that you might want to pose to the developers. I don't see this, I don't, in other words, I don't see the market vested in opportunity here to kind of build this all out in five years.
But you stated that, that we have potential to generate seventeen million dollars in potential...
But that's over, if, you know, that's at the end point.
So in twenty years, we have potential for...
Right. The, in other words, the easiest way to, you know, I mean, I did a very concerned estimate. The easiest way is for someone like Kevin Esposito, that's what he does for living, Fraser Assessor, is to analyze the improvement value, I say, take option three, improvement value, in other words, what would it, what would it cost per, per unit to build? The land, we didn't, I didn't even factor in the land, obviously, the land's going to go up in value as you, as you develop this. And then apply a tax rate, I applied today's tax rate, I had no idea what the tax rate's going to be in the future. So that is the way one would do it, and I certainly would defer to somebody like Kevin Esposito, if he said, I'll, I'll, I'll give you an estimate, you know, maybe that's something you want to ask the council, that Kevin Esposito, who's more expert at this than I am, to give an idea of what, what kind of tax impact, maybe, and is what I think Darlene's alluding to, is what will be the tax impact at different phases, different, you know, you know.
Is that the council's concern, Mr. Pratt?
Is it the council's concern?
I think that's the council's concern, to deal with the tax rate and are they going to do the pilot program?
Well, what I'm asking is, it was in testimony, and I want to clarify the information so that I understand it, even though I realize it goes to council, if it was said, then I think that I should question it.
Well, yeah, and I think it's a legitimate question.
Just clarify on the way, so...
You know, just, in other words, what you plan at different stages, you know, at those things. I don't want people to be misled when I say seventeen million, they might think, oh, it's going to be, it's going to be two years. If you're asking, what can we expect over different lifetimes, and I think that's a legitimate question.
And how would, how would the pilot have that seventeen million?
All right, the pilot would work this way, right, you, you take the current assessed value, and you take the current taxes that are coming out of that, that's your, that's your pace, you never could go below that. And then, depending on the time period, you would project that, you know, you would get a certain, let's say it's a five-year period, maybe you get a first, you know, twenty percent off the first, you only have the basic twenty percent of the difference between today's impact, today's taxes, and the future taxes, and then forty, and then when you would get up to the end of the five years, you'd pay in full price. That, that also worked out, I mean...
Yeah, on page thirty-nine, because I've been trying to go over this important information and read it, on page thirty-nine, you said the pilot can stretch ten to fifteen years, so that the seventeen, if attention is there for the seventeen million, the municipality would not realize that for probably after fifteen years.
Well, the, the terms of the pilot are the subject of a redevelopment agreement, and people financially smarter than me are going to be advising the town as to how to fashion the pilot. By the way, the town does not have to offer a pilot, they don't want it. You know, I mean, that's, I mean, the developer is going to have to make a case for the pilot. And the pilot typically involves the installation of public improvements, which is things that benefit the public. There may be a consideration for a financial gap, in other words, between what the investment community is going to give and what projects are going to cost. And if the town wants the project, they may, they may offer the pilot to fill in that gap as part of the whole financial package. So that's really up to them, they're going, the developer is going to have to convince the town of the nature of the pilot. I'm just saying that it could be, it could be a minimum of five, typically, ten, fifteen, probably never goes beyond fifteen, you know, in my experience, but again, and, and the terms, obviously, are something that are set between developer and town. So the town has to be happy with the, the flows coming in. The good thing about a pilot is that the money, the hundred percent that goes to the county, they're only going to get five percent of what they would get from this building. And since you have the most expensive county taxes in New Jersey, that is a benefit to this community, because then that money goes to the municipality, and they can share, they would then have, have to make an agreement to share with the school board.
Parking.
Yes.
Specified non-parking space for dwelling unit, and yet there's a proposal for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. As we know from our experience with the Franklin Avenue development, parking, parking was a real issue. And though there might be access to mass transit, we have to assume that if the report says that we're only going to generate ninety children, then we have to make the assumption that if it's a two-bedroom, then it would probably generate more than one person driving. So therefore, the area doesn't have any auxiliary roads for overflow parking. And I, I know that once we discuss something in a... And I, I know that once we discuss something in another development on Bellevue, I said, well, the overflow can park on the streets. Well, in that area, we don't have streets to put an overflow parking on. Yes, it did say one parking space per unit, I understand that we're hoping that mass transit is going to be an option, but beyond mass transit for people to get to other services and resources within the community, we have to make the assumption with two and three-bedroom units, that there would probably be a likelihood of more than one vehicle. I understand that the potential is there for when the retail is closed.
Right.
That we would have that, but the other thing that we need to take into account is besides the residents, what do we do with people who are coming to the development other than those who have assigned parking? So, I'm concerned about that, because we don't have streets, we don't have an area. And if you designate the lower part, which is the, the green area, that might be used for open recreational development, we know in all likelihood, should we get a heavy storm, that you can get flooded in, not just flooded out with, with an exit issue. So, I need to bring that up.
Right.
Because I think that with this number of units, that's there. By the way, just out of curiosity, your comments that Mrs. Mogeru-Rotto was trying to find were on page forty-two. The other, I did have a concern about why we have setback on Washington Avenue of buildings at fifty feet, because doesn't that slow down? And would that affect a height issue?
That has changed, that, that, that was an exhibit we put in before we had met with the council, so the council had, didn't like fifty feet on, fifty stories on Washington Avenue, they referred twenty. So, that illustration has to be changed.
But it's not just fifty stories on Washington Avenue, we're talking about a setback, so...
Right, you mean, it's the building, the building...
Where we found eight, right, do we, are we talking about height? Are we talking about stories or a combination?
We're talking about, well, there's, there's a setback from the, from the road, but there's also going to be like a setback, uh...
Because Washington Avenue drops in a certain way.
Right, there's going to be a setback for the building, in other words, there's going to be a wall set, so this illustration is going to be, has to be changed. There's a few things in the plan that are going to change. One is making clear about the consistency, make that clear, even though we do, we keep talking about it, we need to emphasize, we need to make sure that it's clear that it's a non-combination redevelopment, and therefore, it's a, we went for a friendly redevelopment, we're not seizing any of these properties, it's not planned. And then finally, you raised a good point about the parking. The parking requires a minimum of one space. Now, when you get to these taller buildings, I think, and, and we're getting into a chip lane, and maybe more mass transit, twenty years from now, a lot of people probably only use this car, you might have car rentals, you know, zip cars and those kind of things, where people say, I don't need another car. There are people who live in West New York, for example, that don't have cars, because they take the bus into Manhattan, may or may not be the case here. I, I, I do think you raised a good point about, say, that maybe the option one and two, and I think that needs to be clarified in the plan, and I, I want to correct that and say, we need, it should increase the parking ratio and allow the developer to prove to you, the board, that they could get by with the lower region through a combination of techniques, you know, Harley mentioned, the shared parking with retail, she mentioned, you know, maybe take somewhat, you know, a certain percentage for people to qualify in mass transit, particularly if they have a chip, and so, they'd have to prove that to you. So, I think I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make a change in this plan, because I think that probably makes a good point. As far as the option three, that's just, that's like a whole of a universe, and I think they probably, more than likely, going to have one, if you want, you know?
It's a tough issue, though. Like Darlene said, I mean, S six parked there, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven units, you go by any time, there's twenty-five cars parked in, in the golf course parking.
Right.
And now you're talking, a, a project could have four-thousand units.
Yeah.
There's a potential for a lot of extra parking, and I understand high-rises in Manhattan, people don't have cars, but high-rises in Bellevue, New Jersey, I think people are going to have cars. It isn't like you're going to walk in to your building and have a subway stop. I know they project someday they might have like railbus, there's no plan for that right now.
Well, you know, another way to look at it is that it is a marketing decision. If you are providing a unit and you're only providing one space and people want two spaces, they're either going to have to build more parking or be lucky to buy the unit or rent the unit. So, I, I, again, I think that's, that's a good, that's a very good issue, how we have to address it better.
The power grid, you have a power grid light system that runs right next to that property.
Right.
Is, is that issue taken into, into consideration?
In what way?
Well, would we, would there, would there be any issue with a safety issue related to residences near that grid, since right now, we have next to no residences around it?
That power grid goes right through, right through Bellevue.
Yeah.
And the houses there are...
But is there a substation, isn't there an actual substation? Didn't we approve that a couple months ago?
Yes, it's an accessory building.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
There's one building here that pulled me up, well...
Right, so...
Is it considered a substation or accessory building to the...
Substation.
They're just making approvals to the substation, because it's all water and going down Main Street, and upgrading the whole line.
They're upgrading the whole corridor.
I, I don't know, but I'm asking about it.
I don't, I don't have the answer. I, from what I've read about the issue, there is no, you know, there's no confirmed scientific evidence that it makes any difference, you know? There's suspicions, but, you know, it's definitely true. A lot of people are willing, nothing wrong with that, right?
No, I'm just bringing it up because of the fact that we had to, we had, it was for our, simply our consideration and review, but it was brought up to this board just recently, so that's why, and obviously, you know, I, I, I've been moving around this property in this area with this, with this plan there, and that's why, why I asked, Patty, is there a major gas line around there, that's right?
Is there a gas line somewhere? I think they might be in the public service driveway.
Just the runway. Right now, that's, I think, that's where I am at this point right now.
I come back to density again. We, if we're going to require an upgraded parking, we're going to need structured parking. So, if we, if we happen again, I'm coming back to shorten the towers, we're going to need more of, what's the percentage of open space that's needed around the site? In other words, if you added all these things, are you starting to eat away at their ability to hit their goal?
Well, let's see what the plan is worth. Coverage requires thirty percent of the site for option one to be green, option two is thirty percent, and option three is ten percent green, which is incredible, a maximum of nine, ninety percent maybe built into other previous services. I mean, the, the, the plan that the builder has is like, is like twenty percent coverage. Remember, this parking is going to only be in the plan, that's what he's proposing. That's what...
The river is down.
The river is down, I guess.
I mean, it's a good concern, because like in Bridge Corp Apartments on Jerome, they have tiny rains, have weird, hurricanes passing through, they have to evacuate all their cars onto the streets in a higher level.
Right.
So, down there, there's no streets.
Right.
Away from the bar.
Well, if they're proposing structured parking, you've got a high-water table, they're going to have a problem, and they do it all the time, Owen, you know?
World Trade Center, near...
Yeah, the World Trade Center, seventy stories, a little...
I, I realize now, one of the other reasons, I went back to my notes, we had communication from Mr. Steck, and under permitted uses in the addendum, that's the reason why I was asking the question about the, the substation, is that it seems that here, under permitted accessory uses and structures, we have a helipad. So, I, that's the reason why, I, I think that was the reason why I also just tweaked my interest about the substation, helipad, and electric substation, and, I, I, just bear with me, but I just realized that that was one of the reasons why I raised the question. It's, uh, yeah, attachment, curious, if you'd like to see it.
Oh, that's his, right?
Yes, curious.
That's also in our plan, too.
Uh, well, this is the, this is what we recently received.
Received.
Well, it is in your plan.
Is that our plan?
Then I would say to you that I, I would have concerns about the plines with the, with the building. Well, and also near that substation, which goes, by the way, with Bellevue, I understand, but we don't have any other plans for helipads in any other areas of town, so I, I was, I was raising that.
Right, we'll have to take it out, you know?
Anybody else?
No, I just wanted to say, I'm still not, you know, totally convinced on, you know, fifty stories, but I'm also concerned, even with the, the concept of site plan, because of the location, okay, if you're projecting ninety children going into the schools, let's say fifty percent of those are primary school kids, you have forty-five kids going to school nine, how do they get there if there's like no direct route, and some of them are going to have to cross the railroad tracks?
Be buzzed.
How many kids in this story are there?
Is it hard enough for...
How many kids will they be?
Technically, we're still trying to use the farm of the structure right now, but I might be wrong.
Well, my judgment would have to be part of the redevelopment plan, you know?
It would have to be courtesy of us at this present time, for genti's, yeah?
Darlene, any...
No, I just, I, I...
There's no, no...
Just any recommendation we make, though, we did agree already, it's not confirmed, we agreed that the fire department will be consulted.
Right, yes, no, their site plan, that's what he wanted to say, site plan.
It's both of the chief.
That'd be the chief, yes. There's no further questions, Mr. Matt, and Mr. Gashion, would you like to call your witness?
Yes, just hold it briefly.